...PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, do your roll call.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Campbell?
Here. Tonight we have four Mayor's Awards. We have the two that are listed, and I also have two that we didn't get a chance to give the awards to them. They've been presented awhile before. And I'm going to double down on both of these. I'm going to do them together because I think they kinda, they pretty much do. So, we'll start off with the sweetheart of a gal and her cohort, Gina and Tom. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being Model Burlingtonians. Your commitment to your job, the safety of your community, and the fact that you got eighty people to FEMA training in Maryland without incident is a miracle. You make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play, excluding the mayor. Anyways, on July eighteen, but we're going to give it to you tonight. This Mayor's Award is presented to Gina Harden and Tom Goldberg. Would you two both please come on down? And we're going to ask you to have a word, please. Yes. Can I get a picture of these two?
Yes.
I'll take that. I know, but you're good. God bless you. I was saying, what do you do to my daughters? Where's the place at? Would you guys have a word, please?
All right, I'll just say thank you for everyone just taking time out of their busiest schedules to attend. I mean, it was a monumental effort, and yeah, I was the one that kind of organized it and got everybody there and got everybody back safely, thank goodness. But without your support, and you of the council, to allow your department employees, and Jim, you and Shane, taking the time out of your busy schedules to go, we wouldn't have been able to do it. I think it was a great learning experience for us. We learned a lot. There's a lot of networking done while we were out there. We've got a lot of after-action items to work on, to improve. I think we're better prepared than a lot of cities and counties in the state and even the nation. But this course just helped us improve that tremendously. So, again, thank you for your efforts and appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, Gina.
She stole all my thunder. Actually, what I'd like to talk to you about is your commitment to safety beyond the course. And we've had that with our Skywarn people, working hand-in-hand with the city, our CERT volunteers also doing a marvelous job to help be a force multiplier for you guys to ease on your budgets for those kinds of things. And working with the responders in this community is really great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have these next two. I'm going to do them together as well, except with a little less emotion from the last time watching you. But I'm excited to give these two to Burlington people that their generosity and love for the community, they put their money where their mouths were. And I just think it's just phenomenal, especially you guys giving to what you gave to the swimming pool. You guys don't even have kids. I mean, that, I just think that's outstanding. So, thank you so much. It is my honor to give these awards tonight. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you both for being Model Burlingtonians. Your commitment to this community personally and in business is honorable, and my admiration cannot be expressed in words. Your contribution helps make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play for everyone. On August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mike Crowner and Anne March. Would you two come on down? You're looking so tall tonight. I'm just easy. All right. Man, God bless you guys. I bet we smell a little bit better. I only take a bath once a month, whether I do it or not. Would you guys have a word, please?
I'm not a very good speaker, but thank you so very much for this. This means a lot. I've been fortunate enough to travel all over the United States working, and I'm very proud to be part of Burlington and own a business in Burlington. And I'm proud to live here and work and play. Thank you.
Thank you.
She's such a trooper. She didn't even move the microphone down. She just stood on her tippy toes.
Well, first of all, I got a good alias out of this donation. I'm Mark, or Mike, or whatever you guys would like to call me. I've got cards sent to me. Thank you, Mark Crowner. Anyway, I appreciate this award's great. That's not why we did it, to get recognition. It's just, we don't have kids. Our income comes from the community, and one way to give back is to give back to the community and hopefully positive things can come out of this. Thank you very much, guys.
Hey, make sure you thank your brother Mark, too, would you? Excellent. Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation of check for boots and badges by Mr. Cale Hightmeyer. Chief?
Good evening. Thanks for having us, and thanks for taking a minute to do this. But what we would like to do is give Cale a certificate of appreciation that is awarded to him, Cale Hightmeyer, for your commitment and dedication in organizing and promoting the 2016 Boots Versus Badges. The event in support of the Burlington Police Department, the community of Burlington, and the K-9 program. His tireless efforts and generous spirit are recognized and appreciated. So, not only on behalf of the police department, but on behalf of this council and the whole city of Burlington, we really want to thank you and give you a certificate of appreciation for everything you did.
Hi. This is Jesse. Jesse's also helped me out with a lot that goes into coordinating things, too. And we wanted to come down. We got a big check. So, with that, we wanted to present $12,300 raised from our event, thanks to the community and everybody that came out to help support the cause, and everybody that helped also do donations, also bark and play, helped to do it, helped, excuse me, helped with a donation. So, with everybody's donations, this helps put them a little bit closer to that goal of theirs and to help making the community a little bit more safer.
Amen. Can we get a picture of you and the big check of the council members, please? All of us, come on. Yeah, all of us, come on. That's awesome, Cale. That's why we all dress the same. That's right.
Just give a shout-out to everybody at the Burlington Police Department for helping out for all the last-second things I needed along the way, too. They're champs, so thank you, guys.
Excellent. Thank you.
Did you get through the event without anybody going to the emergency room? That did? A good deal.
Hey, nobody pulled behind me. Hey, Mike, Mark, and Anne, if you guys want to dip on that area, you can go ahead and go right now before we get to the head. All right. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have three resolutions. First resolution of City of Burlington relating to property tax exemption granted under Iowa Code 15.332 for Sogan Container Manufacturing Corporation and authorizing the mayor to sign a development agreement. The second is a resolution approving an agreement between Beanstrom and Kemp, Inc. and the City of Burlington for engineering services in connection with the reconstruction of the Storms sewer outlet at the bluff of the Burlington, or I'm sorry, of the Mississippi River on Harrison. The third is a resolution approving the release and vacation of easements located within the Burlington Crossing subdivision. And we also have three hearings set for September sixth. The first is a consideration of an ordinance re-zoning the property located at 2910 Madison Avenue from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District. Second is a consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Tracy Thompson for encroachment into City Rightofway at 129 Polk Street, Burlington, Iowa. And the third is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 118 North Main Street, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa, with conditions. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Counsel?
No. Thanks.
Okay.
Your Honor, I motion to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second. Moved in second. Let's take a vote.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye. All right, well done. First tonight is a hearing. This is a consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue Roundabout, RISE-RM-0977-643-7D-29.
As the engineers come forward to go through the plans and specs, Eric, are you putting a schematic up?
Yeah.
But we won't have a formal presentation. We did do a formal presentation on the roundabout six months ago or so.
I think it was December or January, something like that.
And the design work that we're seeing here is straight out of what that presentation was, based off of the data that was given to the council at that time.
So, I'm Matt Walker. I'm with French Rentcker Associates. We teamed together with SEH out of Mason City to complete the design of your roundabout. What we have is to fully reconstruct the intersection of West Burlington Avenue and West Avenue, and we will go, we are going to construct a roundabout with a similar format as you see up here. The plans call for a bid opening on August 31st at 2:00. We've got a late start date, or an early start date, hopefully of September 19th, with a late start date of April 15 of next year. And the thought behind that was, we didn't want to force a contractor to begin construction this fall, knowing that it could carry on and could get quite expensive to do that. It is a working day calendar contract. It's got seventy-five working days. The intersection will be fully closed during construction, and the detour route, Eric, do you want to step that up there? Would be Division Street to Roosevelt, and then Division Street to Gear Avenue to get the traffic around for the detour. Let's see, the estimate right now is $1.35 million, and I guess with the RISE grant funding, it will be utilized for the project. There currently is still a snag. We're still waiting on one easement from the former Dresser Rand property. So, I don't think we'll be able to have that bid opening if that easement doesn't come in within the next week or two. I guess with that, any questions?
There has been some, could we go back to that roundabout picture? There's been some question about the ability of semis to navigate that. Can you speak to that?
Yes. All of the designs that go through this fully utilize truck turning movements. The colored concrete, the pinkish color in the center is what you call the truck lane, and what that is, is a twelve-foot lane for the semi as they're maneuvering through that, their back wheels will just jump that curb if necessary, just to make the turnaround. So, all vehicle sizes have been ran through with computer software to show that all different angles that a truck could possibly make would be able to make the turn.
Thank you.
One caveat to that statement. That's all normal-sized trucks, the largest regular semi. About once a quarter to once every six months, Dresser Rand, Siemens Now, does have an exceptionally long truck that comes out of there. That is intended, they will utilize some traffic control and flaggers to route that truck through what would be the slip lane for traffic that would normally be going westbound, turning north. It'll actually be going through that lane backwards with traffic control.
But no problems with tearing up any of that work that's going to be done with that?
It's being designed with the largest regular semi in mind. Generally, in industrial parks, that's what you would see. That inside paving there, that red will be just as thick as the normal street, and it's meant to carry that load.
Where are we at? Where are we on the land acquisition required to do this?
Okay, you have the land acquisitions been approved with the Chamber or the partnership, as well as what's, Triple T?
Triple S leasing.
Triple S leasing.
The property owners on the northeast, or sorry, northwest and southwest corners have already signed purchase agreements. The northeast corner, which was Dresser Rand owned by Siemens Now, is the only holdup, and it is-
Siemens has approved it. They have not signed off on it. I know they have a couple of steps internally that they're trying to work through as part of this, and some of those could be to our favor, actually. But we're still waiting to see if we can get some pressure for them to get through it. And part of it, I mean, really, the hang-up is just the change of ownership, and you're having two different companies trying to deal with a piece of land that was not part of Siemens previously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience that has any questions or concerns?
I'm just looking at this picture right here. I mean, I don't really, I've been through some roundabouts. I'm not a huge roundabout person. But people, we live in Iowa, and we plow snow. Is the medians necessary? Line's been working for years. That's a lot of extra expense, and the medians, is that, I'm assuming is the orange is the medians dividing traffic, like on all four sides? I mean, if the medians aren't there, it's going to make navigation easier for everybody. And you've got to realize, guys, we get snow three months out of the year. Operators have enough problems, let alone a median that might be hitting a 12-inch snow. That's just my concern. And plus, it could be great savings on cutting out.
That was brought up.
Concrete's about 115 bucks a yard, so.
Brian, do you want to?
The medians there, well, number one, the way the lanes are laid out, they are normal traffic lanes, or a little bit wider already. If the medians were to be painted, number one, that would be more concrete that would have to be paved. If you do it as grassy medians, then you end up with the potential that you've got snow plows and traffic running through grass. The medians themselves are actually meant to be a safety feature. It forces traffic in particular directions, and it forces vehicles at particular angles to decrease the severity of any crashes that do occur.
If you didn't have the medians, your road wouldn't have been white.
If we didn't have medians, we could just leave this intersection signalized. Only upsize the geometry, increase the length of the mast arms of the traffic signals. It's, there's a number of ways that you can design an intersection. The roundabout is one of, if not the safest. Once people get used to it, the severity of crashes that occur are, is vastly decreased. The number of conflict points where crashes can occur is about 25% of what's at a normal intersection. And then just the traffic flow, the amount of traffic that it can handle is vastly increased as opposed to stopping traffic with either stop signs or signals.
And didn't we, we also addressed, and I don't know what it is verbatim, maybe you can address that, but about the snow removal and that sort of thing with looking at other communities that have this that are-
Yeah, I mean, Coralville, Iowa City have a number of roundabouts, and they are in the same climate. We have the same situation here. Snow removal, it's not going to be the least complex thing, and I know where the gentleman's coming from as far as snow plows hitting curbs and things like that. It's something that's never going to go away if you've got a curved street. It just happens. As far as maintenance goes, it'll be different than a normal intersection, yes. Is, are city crews able to maintain it? Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns from the audience? And thank you for bringing it up. Good points, Mr. Brown. Counsel?
I have to. I think it's a good move.
Okay. Motion to close?
Second.
Kathleen? Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2016 West Avenue and West Burlington Avenue Roundabout, RISE-RM-0977-643-7D-29.
Second. Let's take a vote, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye. Okay. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 155 Internal, or I'm sorry, International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
This is a code change primarily spurred on by the adoption by the state of the 2015 International Building Code. In May of this year, they updated their state codes and went to the 2015 International Building Code and International Existing Building Code. They were under the 2009 version of that. So, the primary change within our city code, Chapter 155, is going to the 2015 edition of the International Building Code from the 2012. There are a couple minor wording changes under Section 155.02. And then one primary amendment to the code is under Section 155.03, Sections amended. This reads, in Section 1030.1, "Emergency Escape and Rescue is amended by adding the additional exceptions in other than group R3 occupancies. Buildings equipped throughout with an approved automatic sprinkler system in accordance with Section 903.3.11. In Item B, in other than group R3 occupancies, sleeping rooms provided with a door-to-fire resistance-rated corridor, having access to two remote exits in opposite directions." This applies to Floors 2 and 3 of buildings that are, do have a fully sprinkled building or do have two fire-rated corridors for bedrooms that don't have window access. Under the building code, that was changed from 2009 to 2012 and 2015, all bedrooms had to have window access on Floors 2 through 3. Floors 4 and 5 did not, Floors 4 and above. So, if you're on Floor 2, or Floor 3, by the 2015 code, you'd have to have a window access. In 2009, that was not in there. But on Floor 4, you did not have to have that access, just the one-floor difference. And that changed in the code from 2009 to 2012 and continued in 2015 without any real explanation by the state. The state went from 2009 code to 2012, to 2015. We're going from 2012 to 2015. Looking at, there have been some other communities that have made this change as well, and it's something we've discussed internally. Our building inspectors have reviewed it, talked with the fire marshal, and felt that this was an appropriate change to make it a little more consistent for fully sprinkled buildings, especially that they, for Floors 2 and above, that they could have the same requirement for bedroom access. The following section, Chapter 155.04, just has some minor wording changes, taking out Chapter 34. That's no longer listed in the code, just stating it as existing structures. In this section, we'll see, the following code was added to that code as well, just as a clarification, depending on what code you're looking at. So, but the primary change, again, is going from 2012 to 2015 codes, and then allowing the exceptions, which allows fully sprinkled buildings on Floors 2 and 3 to follow the same requirements that Floors 4 and above have, so.
Does this have any, an impact on any projects underway?
This would on the Tama Project downtown. Just from configuration, there, I think there is four units, four units out of the forty-eight total on the second floor, third floor, that this could apply to. Not all the units on the second and third floor don't have window access for bedrooms, but there were, I think, four units on the second and third floor that didn't. So, this could apply to them if this were approved, and as well as any other building downtown.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the audience, questions or concerns? Gina, counsel? Tell that this works okay for you then. Counsel, we're good?
Your Honor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved in second. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 155 International Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved in second. Let's take a vote on it, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Okay, moving forward. We have a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 156 International Existing Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
This is, again, is going from the 2012 to the 2015 edition, this time of the International Existing Building Code. Again, a couple minor changes, wording changes in Section 156, and then adding in, as I mentioned, under the previous code, Section 156.03, Number 6. This is really a clarification for small projects in downtown. Instead of having to go through the computation in the International Existing Building Code of when a sprinkler is or isn't required for a small building maximum of three stories in height, no more than four dwelling units, this clarifies when a sprinkler is required or not required without having to go through that lengthy computation in the code. So, it's something that our building inspectors found just in the past of people who spend a lot of time, and that's a big question, before they even start a project on some of these smaller buildings, do I or don't have to have sprinklers? And this clarifies it, makes it easier. Instead of sending them to the code and having them do a lengthy computation, this just makes it easy and states, if the building's maximum three stories in height, maintain in accordance with the IBC, and doesn't contain more than four dwelling units, et cetera, it does not have to have a sprinkler. So, that's just a clarification that's in our building code as well, and makes it easier for people to know going into the project what the requirements are.
Okay, good deal. Is anybody from the audience that has any concerns? I see none. Lovely audience tonight. Counsel?
I move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 156 International Existing Building Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Moved in second. Let's vote on it, Kathleen.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye. Well done. Now, the resolutions. This first resolution, we've already introduced and seconded. We're just going to discuss it and vote tonight. It is a resolution establishing no parking areas in the 500 block of Terrace Drive, continued from the August 1st, 2016 City Council meeting. Yes, sir. You got a new shirt, Nick?
I did.
Everybody's got a new shirt but me.
You like it?
Yeah, it's nice.
I guess I just wanted to say that the resolution has not changed at all. So, if you'd like to amend any times, you can do that tonight, so.
Thank you. Do you have anything you want to add before?
I'll just mention, this is a follow-up on a request from the school to have the last section immediately adjacent to their facility on Terrace Drive closed during school hours. They're trying to just gain control over access to the facility. They want to make sure that students that may leave campus during the day, that they have some, a little bit more level of control. That's really the purpose of what they're trying to do. They want them to park in their school parking lot where they have controlled egress so that they can make sure that they know who's coming and- They, they want them to park in their school parking lot where they have controlled egress, so that they can make sure that they know who's coming and going from the facility. It's purely the, the purpose behind what they're looking to do. You see in your packet a couple of letters from some of the residents in the area with opposition. You've had, you have a couple of members in the audience as well who have some concerns about the, this change under consideration. And it's up to you whether you, I know at the last meeting, there was a little bit of discussion of potentially modifying or just not approving this, so. Turn it over to your hands to how you want to proceed on that.
Okay. Well, we have some, from the audience that have any discussion or have any questions regarding this? Okay, not even Mark?
Yeah. You guys aren't ever gonna invite me back here again. I, I, this doesn't affect my neighborhood, but I knew, I do know that, that that's a good neighborhood and they pay, pay good property taxes. I personally feel that this is a school problem. They're just trying to push the students to use the parking lot. And at the same time, we're punishing the people that have fine houses around that place and don't want to live close to the school. I really feel like it's a school problem and they're just trying to push the cars to the parking lot. I don't feel that it's a city problem.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Okay, lovely crowd. Counsel?
I'm not approving. I share the speaker's thoughts there.
You're gonna get your chance, brother. Any other comments?
We have here what his comment was.
He said he's, he doesn't support it.
Based on the, the rest of the neighborhood and the restrictions that's been put in place in the rest of the neighborhood, I don't, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem adopting this if there was a stronger presence from the, from the school system. They, it seemed to me that they felt they could live with it either way, is the impression that I got. And why upset the apple cart, I guess, when it's, when the advantage is not that great for them, I guess, the way that I see it. And I'm, I'm not a big proponent of providing on-street parking for anybody, but that's just the way that it is and that's why I'm not opposed to leaving it like it is.
Could I offer an amendment, Your Honor? I'd like, I'd move to amend the time from, it says seven AM to five PM in the resolution. I would like to move to amend to say eight AM to three PM.
Do I have a second on that amendment? Counsel Wilson, do you have any comments before we move forward?
Just, I understand that, that area gets really congested. I've had to drive through there, you know, with the parking and then people still lining up to get their, their children. But I'd have to just think about the people who live there and, you know, pay their taxes and do utilize those parking areas. And it's hard to say really exactly what times they're gonna be using those parking places. I mean, there are times, I'm sure, when it would happen between nine and three that they would need to, need to park there, so. I have a hard time accepting that.
Well, let's take you to the voting system. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Oh, I want to reverse my vote.
I can't reverse it, but, Wilson, Davidson?
Motion to reconsider.
Dave, are you waiting for me? Davidson says no.
Okay. Fleming?
No.
McCambell?
No.
Doesn't make any difference.
You got me all screwed up, Tim.
That's why he goes first.
All right. Thank you for coming down. You still have your, all right.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving agreement with Carl A. Nelson and Company to provide construction management services for the Burlington Police Department renovation project.
Second. And closing your packet is a copy of the Construction Management Agency contract with Carl A. Nelson. We went through a process for requests for qualifications with the engineering firms through that process. Ultimately, Carl A. Nelson came out on top. The fees that you see are listed in here, it has three different components, a base fee of fifteen percent, or fifteen thousand dollars, three percent construction fee. And then they have the general conditions. It's an estimated general conditions at this point, but their estimate is about twenty thousand a month. They're looking at about a nine-month timeframe for construction services. Looking at how the fee schedule is set up, this is pretty comparable with what other contracts are for this type of service. The fees are in line with what would be expected for a firm performing a construction management agency services. They'll be working in conjunction with Estes, James Estes, as the architect. On this project, we're looking at about a nine-month design phase and a nine-month construction phase. Overall, fees, I think, worked out, I haven't looked at it in a while, but I think it's three hundred thousand in that, in that range, depending on how the timing goes, which in, in the project, the actual construction costs are three point five million estimated. But we do recommend moving forward and doing this, working with Carl A. Nelson on this. We're excited to see something happen.
Amen.
Yes. Is there anyone from the audience with questions or comments concerning the construction management agreement? Counsel?
I think it's just important for everyone to, again, remember and realize that the cost of the construction management is basically taken out of what we would be paying on top of other, yeah.
General contractor.
General contractors. So, it's not like it's an added cost. It's actually, it simplifies a lot of things for us.
Good point. Thanks for bringing that up.
And in actuality, it might save us money, probably, in all likelihood. I shouldn't say might, it will.
Well, they're, they're more apt to have our interest at heart, rather than the company's interest at heart, so.
Amen.
It's a good one.
Okay. Any, any questions, concerns from the audience? All right. Counsel, we're good?
Aye.
All right, let's get her done. Kathleen?
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2016 former dresser and site cleanup project.
Second. Mr. Tisner?
Might go on with Impact Seven G here to kind of go over the project, but again, this is
Yes, how you doing tonight?
Doing well, how you doing?
Cleanup of the dresser and site.
Well, Mike, go on with Impact Seven G. I've been working on, the city on this project for almost a couple of years now. Just went out to bid to get the cleanup we received. We had three people at the mandatory preview meeting, but we only see two bids at the end. There was quite a difference in the two bids. However, the lowest bid, which was four percent below the engineer's estimate of probable cost at five hundred ninety-eight thousand and six dollars, was for a J. P. D. cord. And after our review, we've determined that it'd be responsible, reasonable, responsible, and the contract price is considered fair and reasonable. And it was below the engineer's estimate of probable cost. And so, we, I recommend that the city would, I recommended to the city that they accept a bid and move forward with getting this project cleaned up, so.
Excellent. Anybody from the audience have any concerns? Loving the audience tonight. Counsel?
Thank you for your help.
One of the things to just point out, we've entered services with you to get through this phase at this point. We, we'll still have another contract, a lump sum fee for oversight.
Well, I think the, the over, the, just the oversight would be the time materials, I think, and then
Okay.
A lump sum for the reporting that needs to go along with the
Okay.
Department Natural Resources. There's a, another report for the cleanup portion of it. And then as well as moving the site to the no further action that the city's been seeking.
So, you'll have a separate contract that'll come to do the, the backend work with Impact Seven G at, I think the next meeting will be, it'll be on the agenda. This project is designed to be done in
Within ninety days of the notice to proceed.
Okay.
Which I would assume would just start fairly quickly.
All righty.
When this project is completed, then what? Do we have land for sale?
You'll have, have a, a green space at this point. And yes, that land would be available. It could be used for commercial purposes, industrial purposes.
Yeah, commercial, industrial, no residential, but anything else.
But that's part of getting it certified with the state is to make sure that it's in a condition that's, if somebody were to be interested in purchasing it to, to use, they have something that they can hang their hat on, that they're not taking on a
Yeah, the, the note for their action is from the state saying this has been cleaned up to, you know, following their rules and it kind of gives the, any buyer a recovery of assurance that it's been addressed properly.
It's gonna be good for sunbathing, then?
Absolutely.
You're good to go, Dean. You can leave. I got you covered. All right.
Anything?
Thank you, Mike, for your help.
Thank you.
All right, well done. Let's take it to vote.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I have a resolution amending fees at Dankworth Park Pool.
Your second?
Second.
This is a, a resolution brought forward, setting a rate for a sponsored free day at Dankworth Park Pool. The listed price in the resolution, subject to council approval, is eight hundred dollars with some conditions. Just kind of laying out the, the conditions for having the free day, including advance notice, mutually agreed date. Free days open to any and all the public at any age, free of charge, maximum of seven free days allowed in the calendar swim season, or available for reservation on a first-come, first-served basis. This isn't for, done with any one group. South Hill spearheaded this, but any group could come forward on a first-come, first-reserve basis to sponsor a free day, maximum of three days per month, maybe allowed in the months of June, July, and August. And pool staff would reserve the right to limit the number of patrons within the pool area at one time based on capacity and lifeguards on duty. We don't anticipate that being an issue, but just wanted to clarify that within the conditions stated here, so.
Thank you. Anybody from the audience has any questions or concerns? Your Honor's on a roll tonight.
Told you, you're not gonna invite me back.
You're invited anytime.
Um, I don't know what you guys are gonna decide on this, but here's kind of the way I look at it. I'm, I'm a businessman also. When something's not working and something's not making money, which we all know, there's not a swimming hole in this southeast aisle that's making money. They just don't. It's something the community provides, or the city provides for the community. I understand we lose money at it. But, you know, how much money on a Monday does that pool bring in? Does anybody have that answer?
How much money, what?
On, on a Monday, would that pool bring in, for attendance? Does it bring six hundred dollars in?
It, it depends on the day, eh? We've gone from
Well, I understand that.
Two hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. It just depends on
Where I was going with this is, I understand on the weekends, not doing this, but I can't believe a Monday or Tuesday, since I've made this donation, I've been doing some driving around there. And I really don't believe that the pool probably makes six hundred dollars on a Monday or Tuesday. And, you know, other things we could do, you know, it, it, let's promote this thing a little bit. I don't know if we have a manager, you know? We could be doing after-hour birthday parties. Make it more, make it more affordable. Make it three hundred for a birthday party for a couple of hours, you know? There, there's things we can do with this pool besides just back away from it and say, we're losing money, let's close this thing down. That's a beautiful area, guys. It really is. And not to mention, three-quarters of our population's on the south side of town. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Counsel?
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend the resolution, to amend the resolution amending fees for the Burlington Dankworth Pool for a sponsored free day at Dankworth Park to be six hundred dollars with conditions.
Second. Okay.
Your Honor, the reason I'm presenting this is because it was in my packet, but also the reason I was, I'm presenting this is that, based on the information, the additional information that we received from the city manager about the arrangements that we have with the gentleman's club, this tends to be more in line with what we've, have a history of doing. Am I reading that right?
Well, it, we charge, we charge six hundred dollars. They, they, they pay for the first two hundred children that come through. And that's supposed to be the ages four to fourteen, four to fifteen?
Probably goes up to eighteen, probably through high school.
You probably carry it up and change the rules a little bit. Anything, anyone over the, those first two hundred are free. We still charge for the adults that come on those days. Their, the average revenues on the, that are received in admissions on those days is eight twenty, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's, so, the eight hundred was really comparable with what the fees were that were raised on those, those days, but all the kids were free. So, there's parts, parts of what both were, was, was being said, both from staff and from the gentleman's club last time.
So, basically, I, I'm in favor of the gentleman's club model. Six hundred dollars is fine with me, but only for kids. And I think we should limit, that was the goal, to help out the kids. And so, charging the adults seems like a reasonable thing, like the gentleman's club does, for instance. And I think that's a good model to work from. You still accomplish your goal. You get the kids in there for free. Adults cover their own, and, and we cover our costs.
That, that makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
That does me too. You want to, could we?
Well, we have an amendment on the floor, so we have to take care of that first.
Vote on that one, and then you could always make a second amendment.
Okay.
Ready?
Okay.
Well, there's a problem with that, though, because I can't vote in favor of that six hundred dollars if we, if the other amendment doesn't pass, so that, that's, Mike
Take your chance.
Contention.
Take, take your chance.
Roll the dice.
We don't, we got, we don't have any other option unless she withdraws her second. We redo the amendment.
Okay, go for it.
Let's roll it.
Going for it?
Give it a shot.
Okay, this is on the six hundred dollars. Scott?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Uh, no.
Fleming?
No.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I'd like to offer an amendment to the resolution amending the Dankworth Park, Dankworth Park Pool fees for a free day at Dankworth Park to be six hundred dollars with conditions. An additional condition that this only be, this free day only be available to youth, or, is that, would that be the right way to say it?
Eighteen and
Eighteen and under.
Eighteen and under.
Yeah, age
So, that would be item three. Then it would be changed.
Yeah. Amend, to amend item three, to say admission to the pool shall be open to all youth eighteen and under. Got a second on that?
Second.
You, it's still open to others, but they have to pay.
Correct.
I don't know. I, I sort of Six hundred, I guess it, it sounds like you're making an amendment that only them, they, only folks under eighteen can attend.
For free.
For free.
Can you get wording that makes that?
Well, I thought, on number three, it, it did say at the end
Does it?
Open to all youth eighteen and under, free of charge?
Free of charge, that's what it says.
On, on a free day.
Okay.
Is that right?
Okay. That works. Doesn't matter the verbiage.
Well, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Got it covered. So, inclusion amendment is the six hundred dollars and eighteen and under, is what you suggested.
It says on a free day, the admission to the pool shall be open to all youth eighteen and under, free of charge. Is that what?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's not like that. Let's vote it out.
Okay, to be clear now.
Okay. And did I have a second on that?
Eighty, eighty.
You did say, you did say six hundred dollars as far as your amendment.
Yes.
Okay, ready?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is the time that we
Thank you, man.
Will entertain comments from the audience. Dean O.
Hello. I'll, I'll, I'll speak with you, I'll speak with you.
Please give us your name and address.
Basically, my name is Dean K. Fantasy. My middle name is K.E.L.V.E.R. Fantasy. Now, I've got three things. I know we're not talking Now, I've got three things, uh, I know we're not talking about it tonight, but, uh, about, uh, about the riverfront. Uh, you, you have that when the guy was here, but spent all that money on it, and I agree about raising the wall for it, but I still have concern about when you do that, where the railroad depot, there's been a lot of money building that up, that's going to be flooded big time in big muddies, and I know we can't do nothing about big muddies, but, uh, you, what's going to happen is you're going to put another flood, you know, wall over there to protect that area, but that's what made concern, but, okay, I went to Dankwart Park, it's a beautiful park. I saw a lot of traffic, like, they have those guns there, people were five or six cars. I still think that you want to spend all this money on the riverfront, why can't we get any money for Cascade Bridge? Because that would be easier for people to get to that park than go all the way around to the, to the park. Now, I, I know that you didn't have the money in the past because of budget problems, but I still think it'd be nice, so if we could get that, maybe make it half of dirt and half a bridge, I don't know, I'm, don't tamper with it, I'm an engineer. Basically, it would be nice if we did something to renovate that, I, to get that done, because I think it'd be nice for people to go back and forth in that park. Okay, uh, I'm never going on streets, I've got a photographic memory, uh, where the rounder is, and the drug clinic, there's that bridge. I talked to him once, and it's, you said, what, it's over sixty years old? That bridge, you know, goes past those buildings?
Mount Pleasant Street?
Well, you have the treatment center where the old school is, the rounder and that.
Mount Pleasant Street.
Mount Pleasant Street Bridge.
Yeah, uh-huh, and, and I think you told me that's about over fifty years old, I, anyway, I could have got it wrong, but we got the in the future about maybe replacing that bridge, because Dick, you or somebody told me that a bridge used to be over sixty years, their lifespan, you need to replace it.
That bridge is on the agenda.
It is on the agenda, good. Uh, there was something else that kept me memorable, and I lost my thought. But, uh, those were the two main things that I was, that I was concerned, I just lost it. But anyway, those are two main things that I think that we should go toward the future. I think you all do a good job, I'm not here that often, but, uh, keep up the good work. And may the Lord lead you, Lord Jesus Christ give you wisdom and guidance, and peace be with you, but I can't remember what else I was going to say. Oh, I now remember. The school over here that's abandoned, that used to be a high school.
Apollo.
Apollo. Who's in charge of that? Is it you people, or is it the school council?
It's us.
It's, it's the city.
Okay, I heard that that plan for that went, psh, it fall through. The plan to turn that into apartments, is that still going, or is that just fizzled out?
We had one developer who had presented a plan on that, who, uh, at this point was not interested in moving forward. A couple of the pieces he needed to make that work were not going to be possible. However, we do have another developer who has expressed an interest in a similar, uh, idea of rehabbing a portion of that structure. The council will be considering that here, I think the next council meeting will have what, the next action step that they would, would have in line in order to, to look at doing that.
Well, my opinion is this, that's been near vacant ever since the seventies. Either we're going to get this done and get somebody in there, or, I went there, I went to school there, I know you, you were, we hate to see old buildings tear down.
It was the early eighties, though, Dean.
But, oh, hate to see them torn down. But, the problem is, well, you just, you're going to amend that, update the fire code. Problem is, a lot of these old buildings, when they were made, you need handicap accessible, water sprinklers, fire alarms, smoke detectors, and you don't know if it has a thesis in it. What I'm saying is basically, sometimes it's more expensive to rebuild an old building, update it, than to put a new one. Like I said, either get somebody in there that has the money, like maybe Donald Trump, ha, 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 like Donald Trump, to get the money to go in there, to be willing to put the money into it, or just basically tear it down. Because I, I know probably people are going to, N S E is going to get mad at me about this, but you can't save every old building in the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Peace be with you.
Go Cubs.
Thank you, Dean. No, don't take that. Why would you even open that door? You know, forgetting is the first sign of old age, just want to throw that out there. Does anybody else from the audience that has any comments or concerns before we close her up? All right, we've satisfied Dean, Mike, and Mark, all right. Mr. Tisland? Kathleen? Councilman Wilson?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Scott?
Good.
I have no, oh, oh, I did want to thank, uh, Ms. Larger or Larger, I can't remember what your last name is, I don't know how to pronounce that, what's that?
Lager.
Lager? She, uh, won the contest of the blood drive, uh, for the city of Burlington, so, uh, good job, way to give blood, um, blood suckers out there, you know? But, uh, we, we've got to have that, so fantastic, thank you so much for that, uh, that's all I had. Mayor Protem?
If you haven't been out to the golf course recently, you should go out to Flynn Hills Municipal Golf Course and play golf. We had a great time on Saturday with the gentleman's club golf outing, and, uh, the course is in great shape, and, uh, there's a lot of birdies out there to be had.
You wish, and we've got the bishop back. Bishop, any words?
Uh, no, I just got back from a trip, happy to be home, and I have nothing further to say at this time.
But you reserve the right. City Manager?
I did want to let you know, we did receive a letter of resignation today, uh, from, uh, Ryan Thornburg. Uh, he's been with the city for eight and a half years, and, uh, he's looking to move on to be the county engineer in Van Buren County. Uh, so we'll, we'll be in the process of looking to fill that position here over the next couple of months. Mentioned the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge overpass, uh, we do have funding in this next cycle, uh, the state's cycle begins October one. So, once we get past there, we can, we're in a spot where we can start to incur costs that are, uh, that count towards that project. Uh, we're going through a, we're doing a request for proposals for engineering services, or, have those gone out yet? So, and, but they have not gotten back yet. Uh, so we're prob, we're, we're looking in, hopefully in September, to be able to get you a, a, a contract for services, it may not be till October. Uh, but that'll get to the point where we're able to start doing design work. Last I knew, design work on a bridge is a good ten-month process, or somewhere in that neighborhood. Uh, so, if we do get to where we can get construction going, that would be a late summer project next year, possibly into two thousand eighteen is more realistic for when you should expect to see that occur. We do care about big muddies, uh, as you mentioned stuff, but was, we went through design work, uh, we were looking at what was available for funding from the state. Uh, the night, we were very successful and very fortunate to get the twenty-six point two million dollars of funding from the state for this. Uh, we could not do any of the flood wall work without, uh, that assistance, but to provide full protection, I think we're in a thirty-five million dollar range. Uh, and I don't even know if that got all, all the way up to the marina, but it was, we were looking to try to get at least past big muddies, uh, and all the way down to the sewer plant. Uh, we do provide protection within this design work for the depot itself, it's going to rely on a, some permanent burn, but also some, uh, HESCO barrier-type protection for a portion of that. Even getting that work done doesn't, uh, get completed until, I think, the twenty twenty-three. Uh, the work's going, going to be done on this flood protection work over, uh, four separate, uh, projects, uh, every other year, construction work going on with that. So, we are trying to make sure that we cover it, and I hear what you're saying on the Cascade Bridge, uh, it would be nice to be able to use that funding there, but the state wasn't willing to give us for, give us money, uh, to do Cascade Bridge.
Yeah, that's what you're saying, that basically, that was the problem.
Yeah, so, uh, however, the council does look at that as one of their primary goals. Uh, it's one of the top goals that they had in this last goal-setting session, and if, if they can find a way to make the financing work on that, I think that they are on board with you on making that happen.
Yes.
Yes, that would be nice.
Kind, kind of, sort of. Hey, uh, before we go, I, I forgot one thing, I do want to say, uh, thank you for doing the radio show, uh, also want to thank Tim Scott again for buying every blue bulb in the state of Iowa. I, I just got to throw that out there, he has just been, uh, he's been everywhere, so, uh, half the blue lights that you see in Burlington are probably because of this guy, or probably more higher than that. But, before we do close out, Chief, you, the police, the fire department won an award, would you, do you want to, uh?
Yes.
Dean, I forgot. I'm sorry about that, I, I, I didn't make a note for myself, and I'm getting old, too, just like Dean, I forget stuff.
Yeah, we won the Iowa Donor Network Legacy Award, and I don't remember what legacy, something to do with the We got the award for education, so, it was really neat, the, the spokesperson for the Iowa Donor Network in our area came down and gave us an award, and she kind of went back in history, she had stats of how many referrals that we have made as a fire department. She went back to twenty fourteen, we made zero referrals to the donor network, twenty fifteen, we made eight, and we were already up to eight for this year, so. That's what we made as a fire department, a lot of other, a lot of referrals, so, we have somebody that could be an organ donor, other people can make referrals besides the fire department. A lot of times, it's the hospital staff or a medical examiner.
This the first time, this the first time that a fire department has won that award, too, I think I remember her saying.
Yeah, I know she said, well, they only give two awards a year, and one was to a hospital and one was, uh, non-hospital, which were, that's the word we got, so. It was pretty neat, that was pretty special for the guys, and we've had her come down and do training on all three shifts the last, well, some, it was somebody different last year, but, so. It's a good feeling, you know, when you have a, something maybe not a good outcome of a, an ambulance call, to know at least, you know, they made a difference in somebody else's life. And when she comes and talks about all the things, one person, even if you think, you know, this person's not going to be a donor for whatever reason, oh, there's things that they can use, so, yeah, it's, it's pretty neat.
Thank you.
No, that's, that, that, I, I was very proud of the department, and when, when, uh, she gave her, uh, gave her talk and explained it. She had said definitely, we were the only non-hospital-related, uh, entity to receive one of those awards, and there's, there's, there's two in each category, and there, wasn't there five categories?
Right, there's
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the other ones were, ours was in education, though.
Yeah, and then, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was, the, I see the blue light in the, uh, southwest corner of the fire department, uh, supporting the police department, and I know that's, that, uh, I, I felt right here when I saw it, so, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it. All right, Ann March, you are tall in my book, my friend, just throwing that out there. Counsel?
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Wilson?
Hi.
Davidson?
Hi.
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambell?
Hi. This meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.